Good evening, Blake. Begin our meeting this evening with the pledge to the flag, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to begin with approval of our amendments from September meetings. If they've everybody's had a chance to read them and go over them.
I make the motion.
I have a correction.
Okay.
Okay, when you did the deputies' report, you said that Deputy Calusi was out on paternity leave, and he was not, and he's no longer a deputy. So I just wanted that corrected because it is on the video.
Okay, but it's not in the minutes.
No, nobody put it in the minutes, but it was said and recorded.
So I won't be changing anything in the minutes.
Okay, well, I just wanted it on record that he has no children.
Okay, are any other, we have a motion to put the corrected minutes?
You want me to finish the motion? Make the motion to approve the September operating statements, the September 23, 2024 public hearing minutes, September 23, 2024 council meeting amended minutes, the October 7, 2024 work session minutes, and Quantum's financial statement for September 2024.
I'll second it.
Okay, any other additions or corrections?
Wait a minute, okay, I don't know about that.
It's not in the minutes.
But I don't want it to say amended minutes.
Because it wasn't in the minutes.
Okay, so there's nothing.
The amendment statement that was videotaped because people's gonna look and the minutes aren't gonna be amended, so.
The minutes don't have to be amended because it's just.
Right, so do I need to even say anything about the fact that Sherri wants to amend the video statement? Because I'm not approving that.
Yeah, you can say that.
I just want it clear about the minutes.
So, at the point where, you want me to read the whole thing again?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we approve September operating statements, September 23, 2024 public hearing minutes, September 23, 2024 council meeting minutes, October 7, 2024 work session minutes, Quantum's financial statements for September 2024, and Sherri's amendment to the video.
All right, I'll second it.
Okay, any questions? Hearing none, auditors in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those, okay, your motion's carried. Okay, all right, under my report, we have a resolution for participation in the Sustainable Maryland Municipal Certification Program. And I'll just say it's Laura, she will read that due to my probable my one eye, please.
So it's the Union Bridge Resolution supporting participation in the Sustainable Maryland Municipal Certification Program. And this is it. Whereas, a sustainable community seeks to optimize quality of life for its residents by ensuring that its environmental, economic, and social objectives are balanced and mutually supportive. And whereas, Union Bridge strives to save tax dollars, assure clean land, air, and water, improve working and living environments as steps to building a sustainable community that will thrive well into the new century. And whereas, Union Bridge hereby acknowledges that the residents of Union Bridge desire a stable, sustainable future for themselves and for future generations. And whereas, Union Bridge wishes to support a model of government which benefits our residents now and far into the future by exploring and adopting sustainable, economically sound local government practices. And whereas, by endorsing a sustainable path, Union Bridge is pledging to educate itself and community members further about sustainable activities and to develop initiatives supporting sustainable local government practices. And whereas, as elective representatives of Union Bridge, we have a significant responsibility to provide leadership which will seek community-based, sustainable solutions to strengthen our community. Now therefore, be it resolved that to focus attention and effort within Union Bridge on matters of sustainability, the Union Bridge mayor and council wishes to pursue local initiatives and actions that will lead to Sustainable Maryland Municipal Certification. Be it further resolved by the mayor and council of Union Bridge that we do hereby authorize Circuit Rider Mike Reynolds to serve as Union Bridge's agent for the Sustainable Maryland Municipal Certification process and authorize Mr. Reynolds to complete the municipal registration on behalf of the town of Union Bridge.
So I need a motion for you to accept and sign.
Do you have anyone who'd like to make a motion that we accept this and sign it?
I'll make a motion that we accept the sustainable, the resolutions supporting participation in Sustainable Maryland.
I'll second it.
I'll second, and just to let you know, the reason why we'd like to do this is because there's a lot of other grant money that we could be eligible to be getting, and some, there's even some free state money in there that comes from time to time that you just have to keep up on. And this is just to give us a better opportunity to get some of those funds that are out there. So, any further questions, anyone? Hearing none, auditors in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those, motions carried. Hopefully, we get this signed and we get it back to Sustainable Maryland. And we will probably get a very big plaque about like this that we can put out here somewhere that says we're a participant in it. And like every month, they have different grants that come up. Some of them are for like parks and recreation and things like that. That's a lot of money out there that we're missing out on. So we're gonna try to see what we can get, even a little bit of money every now and then for water and sewer projects. Very little, but whatever we can get that's free money. Okay, the newsletter has not been finished for this quarter yet because Mike's been busy. We had a lot of other problems with our water situations around town and other projects that Mike's been waiting on. So the newsletter probably, probably won't get out until we try to get one out by sometime the first of December. So if it's out for the next quarter, but it's just been so busy around here that it really wasn't our number one priority, get a newsletter out with all the paperwork that's had to be done around here. And Dawn has the rest of my report. I'm not gonna sit here and bore everybody with everything that, all these meetings that I go to and attend. So we're gonna go right down to Mandy with her report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to give a little bit of an update on my research into the cannabis dispensary that we had discussed. I found that Maryland actually has its own Maryland Cannabis Administration that it focuses on where dispensaries can be located, cannot be located, and it actually goes through what local jurisdictions may and may not do as far as putting certain restrictions on it. The sensitive locations that they focus on, and I believe we discussed how many feet. And this is a standard, but the places where dispensaries cannot locate within 500 feet are primary school, secondary school, childcare center, playground, recreation center, library, place of worship, public park, or within 1,000 feet of another dispensary. Now, local jurisdictions, they can increase those distances. And you can increase it up to 1,000 feet. They also have certain requirements that can allow that dispensaries not be within 100 feet of areas zoned for residential use only, which may be something for the town to discuss. Now, just so that you know, which I did not know this before looking into this, is that Carroll County right now only has two dispensaries, both located in Westminster. So if this is something that a dispensary could get into Union Bridge by going, you know, because there's a lot that they have to go through, even if Union Bridge allows this into the code, is that if they could, the town needs to be aware that they are looking at, you know, that would be number three in the county as far as people coming into town. Just, and again, where there's, it's not about restricting the access. It's about just making sure that the town is aware of this information because I didn't even know this before I started looking into that. Frederick has a couple, but I mean, this would be a pretty central location for Carroll County as well because if there's only two in Westminster, then you also have Frederick County coming into Carroll County for the town of Union Bridge as well. So I did wanna discuss with you as far as if we're looking into doing an ordinance for the code is, does the town want it to be in business local where that's where we have the alcoholic beverage sales, which that is typically where this is gonna fall under? Because again, there's no other municipalities as far as small towns, Sykesville and Mount Airy and everything that's following this because they don't have anything. We're following Westminster City is really what we're using. Or do you want to put it into the restricted industrial area and change it there? Or, you know, do you want to put this as a conditional use where it's where it would be under board approval? Just questions that if we're going to go through this process of what does the town want to do? And that's, I mean, really where we are is looking at this because we can, we can do definitions of cannabis dispensary and cannabis products and then go through putting the restrictions of where that is. And we can put it under wherever, whether it's business local, restricted industrial. But again, if it's business local, then it's gonna fall under restricted industrial, which as the town is aware, that's the area that was brought this into question. Which at the last plan, planning and zoning meeting, we did have that individual come to that meeting and question because he's very interested in getting this place leased. And I guess he's had a lot of people come to him. Which again, there's a lot of hoops that you have to jump in order to go through this dispensary process. There's only two in Carroll County, so I think the process is pretty long. I don't think it's just you sign a lease and you have a dispensary. So I mean, this could be years before it's even up and running, even if the town moves rather quickly.
Yeah, but what I understand, it's, it is a long process, investigating process, things that he has to do as far as security and things like that. And put up a bond that's non-refundable, I think, from what I understand. So you invest a lot of money if it doesn't work.
Yep, and of course, anything that the town would have would say that they have to follow all of the state laws involved with that. But I mean, once it's leased to him, I mean, if he's getting his money coming in for the monthly lease and then they're going through the application process, that's gonna be on them to follow all the laws. So that was just my quick little update on that because I did find out some new information. I just need guidance from the town on what you want me to do going forward.
Okay.
So you say you're gonna follow, you're looking at Westminster's ordinance?
We're looking at West, I, I have Westminster ordinance that I have been looking at. Now, that one is a little bit because they have agriculture, which is the growing of it. They also have that, they have ordinances with that in there, which I don't think the town needs to look into. We need mainly something that would be for the dispensary. So theirs is a little bit more complicated than I don't think what the town needs per se. I think that we can be restrictive to the point of following what the Maryland Cannabis Administration has for their zoning update, and that was as of June 1st of 2024.
Right.
So that would be where my guidance would come from, is the restrictions, putting the definitions and putting where these dispensaries can and cannot be located within the town.
Sounds good to me. I think we really wanna get a handle on that before we really have to worry about it.
Right.
It's gonna come this way one day or another, so.
It is. It is, it's more and more. But I was, like I said, I was surprised that there was only two in Carroll County.
Well, I think that the process is so long, and I do know some of the other municipalities have talked about it, you know, just to make sure that they got their i's and t's, everything taken care of when it happens.
Absolutely.
I know the Maryland Municipal League talked about it extensively back last fall and during legislative session.
Yep, I just, I don't think anybody, the smaller municipalities here in Carroll County have not put anything into action thus far.
Right.
And it could be in, you know, in the works, but nobody has put that into action thus far.
I think, I think we definitely want to do it, maybe, and it's one thing we have to talk about is the footage of what we want to do, whether we want to change or leave it as it is. But, and I mean, it's something I think we really have to think about when you ride around town, look at as far as schools and churches and things like that, where you want to keep it away from. Our biggest thing would be the school, then you talk about keeping it away from actual residential development. You know, that is gonna be a development out there one day.
With the playground.
Yes, mm-hmm. The playground's good, right next to the store up in that area somewhere, so I think it's something you have to think about. Now, Tony Towns, they have a, what do they have up there where they grow? That's not a, that's right beside Memorial Park in Tony Town.
Yeah, they manufacture, I don't think, there's not a dispensary. Because they, on this Maryland Cannabis Administration, they have a whole map of where everything is. And that wasn't one of them that was considered manufacturer area.
But Union Bridge is in that area for the dispensary according to what he's telling us.
Mm-hmm, correct. But again, that would be, you know, if the town changes the code to allow for that, then you know, you're kind of, you put your hands up and then they have to follow Maryland law as far as going forward. And like I said, that could take years if it ever actually happens, we don't know.
What's the, what's the downside of having dispensary?
What's the downside of having, yeah, I mean, having bars and having stores that sell alcohol? I mean, and that's where they're, that's kind of what, looking at this Maryland Cannabis Administration, that's what they're looking at. Because actually, what it says what you, local jurisdictions may not do is make zoning requirements more restrictive than zoning requirements that existed for registered hemp farms or alcoholic sales. So, I mean, they're putting that right up there with sale of alcohol.
Okay, well, they make a lot of money off of it, that's why.
So, like I said, I just need guidance, and if it's something that we want to discuss at a work session in more detail,
Yes, I think we need, yes.
then we can do that.
Right.
But I just wanted to bring some light to the new information that I learned.
Can we get a copy of what you have from the state?
The zoning, mm-hmm, absolutely.
Because Comptroller's Office put out a report last week. If I can find it, because Maryland saw a 52% increase in cannabis tax revenue. $22 million tax between April and June. Sixty-three, $63,700,000 in tax revenues have been collected so far. Now, all they gotta do is stop what they're doing with the money instead of, we shouldn't have problems in this state with that kind of money coming in on tax revenues on that. And that come from the comptroller, so unbelievable. You have anything else for us?
I do not have anything else.
All right, Deputy McGinnis.
Just to check back for the record, it was either it was out on paternity leave. Seven weeks, so.
Congratulations.
Thought it was gonna be six, but it turned into seven. He was, he came a little early on Labor Day, so we're very blessed and very, he's very healthy and everybody's doing well, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you, I'll show you guys a picture.
But he even told me while he was off, he, with having the baby, he got COVID while he was off. And I had him up for three weeks.
Yeah, yeah, my wife's gonna reel this back and say, you were playing the violin up there. But I had bronchitis and then COVID right after it, and that wasn't fun. Anyway, that's all right, as long as he's healthy.
That's right, yeah.
So it's been a minute. Between August 26th and October 28th, the Carroll County Sheriff's Office received 104 calls for service. Don't want everybody to be over the home, that's a few months there, so. Out of those calls for service, 14 were found to be reportable. On 8/27/24 at approximately 1:00 a.m., a vehicle stop was completed in reference to a vehicle operated without registration. Those citations were issued in that case. On 8/28/24 at 5:00 p.m., a fraud was reported in the 100 block of West Broadway Street. This included some income tax fraud, and the case was forwarded to the IRS for further investigation. On 9/24 at 1:39 p.m., a hit-and-run accident was reported on North Main Street. The suspect was located and was later charged with driving intoxicated in a hit-and-run accident. On 9/17/2024 at 12:35 p.m., a fraud was reported on East Elgar Street. An apartment was listed for rent with an email attached for a security deposit. The victim was sent $1,000, or the victim sent, I'm sorry, $1,000 security deposit, and the ad was found to be fictitious. We see this more commonly throughout the county, so just so everybody's aware of that. On 9/18/24 at 2:59 p.m., a fraud was reported on West Broadway Street. Several separate individuals attempted to receive cashier's checks from a business listed as L.K. Dental on the checks. The checks were found to be from an insurance company listed to one name. The several suspects were kind of uncovered in this, in this convoluted case. The investigation is still ongoing with pending charges. On 9/19/24 at 7:00 p.m., a police information report was completed in the 200 block of East Elgar Street regarding a children's welfare. The case was forwarded to CPS for further. And on 9/24/24 at 5:00 a.m., a crisis response, our crisis response team, I'm sorry, assisted Frederick County's with a search warrant on Benidorm Street. Drone deployment was administered in case somebody saw a drone flying around town in that operation. On 9/29/24 at 12:32 a.m., an overdose was reported on North Farquhar Street. The subject was transported precautionary to Carroll Hospital Center after the medics administered about four milligrams of naloxone. On 10/12/24 at 8:00 p.m., a theft was reported in the 100 block of North Main. Political signs regarding the presidential election were removed from the complaints yard, case open for further. On 10/15/24 at 10:52 a.m., an unattended death was reported on Pembroke Street. Prince Funeral Home responded to take possession of the deceased. On 10/18/24 at 7:35 p.m., an assault was reported in the 200 block of East Elgar. An exchange of words allegedly occurred outside of a residence when alleged suspect grabbed the victim's neck. This case is currently open, filing, pending a follow-up and charges. On 10/23/24 at 2:45 p.m., a report was completed in the 100 block of North Main. This included, a student had a notebook with an alleged hit list on it of other students. The school administrators and parents were made aware, and interviews were completed. On 10/25/24 at 11:16 a.m., a report was completed in reference to a disorderly conduct in traffic complaint on Wareheim Alley. A negative encounter initially occurred while the alleged suspect was walking his dog without a leash. The complainant advised that threats escalated resulting in the suspect spinning tires aggressively on Wareheim Alley while shouting obscenities at him. On 10/26/24 at 12:00 a.m., a tobacco violation was reported in the 100 block of South Main, and this resulted in citations issued. And just a reminder, everybody, we got Halloween coming up. That's normally the time of year where you get a lot of vehicle thefts, thefts from vehicles, I'm sorry. So just make sure your vehicles are locked, sheds are locked, houses are locked, prevent that from happening. Also, you know, with the string of thefts that I had during the summertime, just kind of a reminder that, you know, it was individuals riding their bikes on routes like 75, you know, middle school age to high school age individuals on Route 75 or some of the backroads, you know, around this area late at night. So if you see something like that, please let me or the sheriff's office know. Try to, you know, report it because that may be a theft about to occur or has occurred. And then just a reminder, if you're experiencing a crisis, to call 988. It's really easy, just call 988, they'll be available to you. And I think that's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are at public comments and concerns. Have any reports from rec council today?
Yep.
See the Atkins family back there, we have some comments or anything?
Not particularly.
Oh, okay, no one? All right, we're gonna go into committee reports then, we have the comments. Sherri will start with you, and you're working around the table.
Okay, I did not attend the work session. On 10/7, I was out sick with the flu. On 10/17, I reported the street light out to North White Street and Broadway. On 10/21, reported traffic light outage on South Main Street, going south on Main Street. And 10/22/24, I attended the Heidelberg Materials Community Dinner meeting, and that's all I have.
Ellen?
I attended the Drug Awareness Expo that was very interesting. Had a lot of good presentations on October the 2nd. And then on the 22nd, I also attended the Heidelberg Dinner and listened to the present, presentation other than various parking enforcement items throughout the month.
I don't have anything other than the lead service line inventory we're trying to compile. If you have not identified your service line material, please do so. It's a huge undertaking that, that they have put on us to do this. And I'm seeing fingers pointing. I will not point fingers. So please, please, if you're watching this, please do it and help us out. We still have to identify our side of these service lines, and that's even a larger undertaking. So please, help us out.
And the other project's done, right? They've done a good job.
Yes, 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 the Val-Bolt job is complete, and Water Main installation is complete. And everything looks good right now, so hopefully it won't settle on us, but yeah, some of them probably will. So just let us know, some of them patches settle, let us know so we can get in touch with the contractor and they'll come back and top them off.
Laura?
On October 2nd, I attended the Union Bridge Drug Awareness Expo. I'd like to thank the organizations who participated and Ellen, Judy, and Perry for their support in the event. And I also like to thank the Union Bridge Fire Company for allowing us to use their facilities. On October 2nd, I requested a PIA for September 2024. On October 7th, I attended the work session. On October 12th, I notified Sherri of a light issue on White Street. On October 16th, I received a call from a resident regarding a car with expired tags that had not moved in more than three weeks. I took pictures, sent them to Lita, who's our parking enforcement person, and asked her to look into it. And the car was chalked, and then Ellen gave it a ticket for expired tags. I attended the Lehigh Community Council Meeting on October 22nd. And on October 26th, I received a message on my machine from someone who was excessively irate over a parking ticket. In the message, he called me a derogatory name and said a few bad words. I spoke to Lita this morning, who said that she had issued a $25 parking ticket to a car parked along a yellow painted curb. And the owner of the vehicle came out and screamed at her in person. And he came back to her later and screamed at her again. And a resident intervened, and he backed away finally. And then I also sent Perry and Kevin a copy of the message, and Dawn. And then Master Deputy McGinnis went to visit the house today to de-escalate the situation. So thank you for that. Hopefully, he'll be successful and he will calm down. But we have seen an increase of people yelling and being obnoxious to Lita, Ellen, myself about parking tickets. So I mean, parking tickets are pretty self-explanatory. Pay the meter, don't park in a yellow line, don't have expired tags, don't park your trailer more than four hours on the street. It's not our fault if you get a ticket, so be nice.
Don't park the wrong way on the street.
Don't park the wrong way on the street. I mean, there's just so many things that people are just losing their marbles over parking tickets lately. So keep it cool. I know there's a lot of tension going around, but it's, you know, we don't deserve to hear it. And I don't appreciate Ellen having the brunt of it when she went to go ticket a car. And I don't appreciate Lita being tracked down multiple times over a parking ticket. And I certainly don't appreciate someone leaving that on my answering machine at home when my children can hear it and did hear it. So just be civil. And I also spoke to Lita and Ellen multiple times throughout the month regarding different parking issues, including these.
I attended the work session, I went to the Lehigh Materials Meeting, which was really, really informative. And for now, the streets are looking good.
Yes. I forgot to mention during the drug awareness program, we do have a video that's gonna be put on our website with all the vendors, everyone's information that they gave us. We did not. We did not have a very large turnout, but the people that were there said they have found since COVID, a lot of people don't come to the drug awareness programs, they see it on website or something, and they view it later, and they get a lot of phone calls after that, because people are too ashamed to go in and say that they have problems with their families or their whatever, but they do get a lot of phone calls and participation after that. We had a young lady from Tontown, actually, she's my step-granddaughter, she videoed it, she's a producer on videos, and she done a very good job on it, so that will be on our website within the next few days or next week or so. But she did a really good job on it, takes, and you can go to different sections and watch different, different, different agency, you don't have to watch the whole thing, if you want to go up to Mountain Manor, you want to see who's, you can just go click onto that and just see what they had to say and get the information. So, it was very informative, she did a really good job on it, so we'll have that on there pretty soon. And thank you, Kevin, for all your hard work on that, even though you're going to leave, but you did a lot of work on that behind the scenes and helped us out a lot on that. So, we appreciate it all. And I think it's, we didn't have a lot of people there, but like they said, if you save one life, it's worthwhile having, so. They said we have another one, they definitely would be there again. It's so, you know, we, like you, we gave your report, you know, we did have an overdose in town, it doesn't happen often, but it does happen, and that's just the ones that we hear about. You know, so, now that people can get Narcan out of machines, they asked me if I wanted to put a machine here in the office, and I, right now, I do not want to put a Narcan machine in here. I don't need people coming down here trying to break into building at nighttime to get their Narcan, and, you know, I feel sorry for them in a way, but there's only so much you can do for people. And it's just one other thing that can try to break into whoever has a machine in their office or their building. I can just, not saying that it will happen, but I know what can happen, and we don't need that down here right now, so. Do we have any other business for us this evening? Our next work session will be November the 4th, our next council meeting will be November the 25th, and just to let everybody know, there's, like everything else, there's going to be a lot of traffic in town the next couple of weeks, the fire company's got a lot of stuff going on. You had this Marine Corps birthday party down here in a couple of weeks, that's going to bring a lot of Marines in town, we should be the best protected community in Carroll County with all these Marines around, so let's hope so. Other than that, the holidays, we have, Trick or Treat is on Thursday night. Anybody wants to participate in Trick or Treating, have your light on your porch, make sure if you have your children out there that you have some lights on them, flashlights or something, so they can be seen walking up and down the street. Please do not let little children run up and down the street by themselves, let's have some chaperones with them, make sure they don't get run over by cars. There's going to be a, a lot of people around town that really get into Trick or Treating, and people really get into buying costumes. So, if you live outside of town, I mean, we don't get a lot of activity up north in town, please come downtown, there's a lot, a lot of activity at the fire hall on Main Street and different places, find a spot, look at the kids, come by, take some videos of them, take some pictures of them, and there's going to be some really nice costumes out there out here, so it's going to be a very enjoyable evening. The Lions Club has their program at the Union Bridge Fire Hall tomorrow evening.
Tomorrow evening at 6:00.
6:00, so they have a little Halloween parade there within the fire hall, they parade around, and, you know, costumes and things like that, and everybody gets some candy and stuff like that. So, that's tomorrow night at the fire hall, Trick or Treating is in town on Thursday night, and so you don't have to jump from town to town, because after a long time of trying to get it done, every community, every town has Trick or Treating the same night, pretty much the same time. So, it's not like the old days when you hit Union Bridge today, and you hit Tontown tomorrow night with Carlo, the kids, everybody stays pretty much in their communities. You will have people living like Union Town, Middleburg, places like that, that don't have, you know, large community homes, you know, they're more than welcome, come to Union Bridge and participate. We have a really good time over at the fire hall, sitting on the ramp, watching all the kids come by, and I think Masonic Lodge usually has, which won't need it this year, but they usually have hot chocolate, but it's going to be 80 degrees this year, so. Or you'll be out there sweating, we'll have fans.
Is it 6:00 or 6:30? Is it 6:30?
Uh, I think it's, it's, it says 6:30, but people start at 6:00, so anywhere from 6:00 to 8:00, you know, everybody's always out there ready, and bring all the kiddies around and have a good time. You have anything else for us, Dawn? Did I miss anything? Okay? If I haven't missed anything, we're in line for adjournment.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
I second that.
Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, ayes?
Aye.
Noes? Thank you for coming, and hope to see you next month. Trick or Treat, happy Halloween.